To the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so then I'll call the order and go to 2.0 this year. Whatever, I will turn that over to the staff.
Yeah, 2.0. Bill and Molly, can you do them at the same time? Sure. And have them both stand and follow me. Okay, and I'll say instead of uh, your name, I'll just ask you to state your name. So raise your right hand, I say your name.
I already said it.
Your name is? Do some swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge. Do some swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge. The responsibilities and duties.
Responsibilities and duties.
Of the office of the school board.
Of the office of the school board.
Of directors of St. Helen's School District.
Of directors of St. Helen's School District.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the said district in the best of my ability.
And the policies of the said district in the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
By serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members.
And my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students.
While respecting the privacy of students.
And employees.
And employees.
I shall recognize.
I shall recognize.
That a board member has no legal authority.
That a board member has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made.
And that decisions can be made.
Only by the majority vote.
Only by the majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide.
And I shall abide.
By majority decision.
By majority decision.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right.
While retaining the right.
To see changes in such.
To see changes in such.
Decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Constructive decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
That was way good.
Okay.
Destructive.
So, the state of Oregon, county of Columbia, um, we're subscribing and swearing in this day will be the ninth day of August of 2023, so.
So, there's another way to do that. You can read the whole thing and say, "Do you swear?" And then at the end we say, "I swear." That's what we did in grand jury today. That's kind of cheap.
I've written polls like that every time.
Yeah, no, we did, we both did it on this side. That was kind of a cheap, that's a cheap.
Cheap.
But I feel like it got longer, is it a little longer?
It feels longer, yeah.
It's alright, it's.
Every, every year, there's a couple of it.
No, I think they condensed and had a bigger word. Yeah. It turns out.
You did, you guys did well.
You made it, go ahead then.
3.0.
Yeah, okay, so that 3.0 is agenda for whom? I just made the added unitary concern, you're right.
Okay, I would like to add a, um, affirmation of our votes and actions for the last vote.
Like to, you know, to amend the agenda.
Oh, well, okay, I'll get to amend the agenda.
I will.
Okay. We got into this much before.
Are you doing okay? Um, they only more access, we do not have anything or voting on, so we would need to add an action item. Like this, that's a bit.
You could add an action item.
Yeah, so, yeah, but I don't have, like, maybe.
Yeah, but I'd like to have the action.
2.5 becomes action item, something, there is no action item, so.
Okay, I.
Should be the first and the second.
I, I'd like to make that, actually, 3.0. And then 3.1 media agenda. Oh, no, that's a minute, it's a little terrible. Let's, I was just wanting before the consent agenda, because the consent agenda is, yeah.
Well, let's take a vote that we all agree with you on for two, okay, so, um, um, is this to add and not add action? I then just accept.
Yep.
All minutes and decisions in prior meetings.
No, it's that add before adding.
Add nothing.
Adding to the amendment about.
Adding to the amendment, okay, yeah, but two add. Two add.
Yeah, we haven't had it yet, right, that's a huge, like, difference.
No, I know, but you stay what you're adding, kind of what I started.
Okay, well, right now, we're just moving, moving, I amend the agenda.
Okay. Then we've been seconded to, wait, hasn't even been seconded, seconded, okay, yeah. But has been, we've been seconded to change the agenda and add action items later to accept all prior meeting decisions.
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead. Yes.
Now that, that's, sure.
Sure.
Alright.
I'd be.
Seven.
Actually, it should be 4.5. 1.5, 4.2, because, because I want to, we really need to, before we have an idea, yes. It doesn't matter, 4.2 is fine.
How many votes?
4.2, where?
Can we do another one, second, however?
We have two 3.0s.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, we have two 3.0s, so we need to change that, however, so. And then notice that children, I don't know. So 3.0, we've got 3.1.
Sure.
The second one?
Sure.
Okay, then let's just change the second one back, Chris, the second 3.0, we'll make that 3.1. Okay, so now, to add what just been, you want that to go in the consent together.
Yep, sure, that's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
It is. Okay, so that can be 4.3 then?
Sure.
Alright, so, Chris, you have all that?
Yes, I think visitors will be four.
Yeah.
Sent will be five, and then your, I think your adding will be five.
Well, then you have to add, well, you have to change that, so we're everything.
We were, we were making the visitors into 3.1, is that bad?
Yes, I mean, it's not related to the end of, it's its own category, so we're going to switch that to, the consent will be the five batch, and this added item will be 5.3.
Let's keep moving, everybody down, how's that?
Okay.
Got it.
Alright, I'll look at you to refer, make sure I'm saying every number right, is it, how about that? Okay, alright, so then, she feels the one 3.0, we're changing it to 4.0, thank you. Alright, so now we've got the 4.0 visitors to address the board, and this is fine for non-agenda items, do we have any?
No requests.
Alright, 4.0, thank you.
I didn't have something, I need to actually put it on there.
I remember.
Okay. Because we don't know what you put on there.
That's why I was, that's okay, so, maybe should we have done that back there?
We did, we're right there, we're still there, we just amended it, we wanted to add the, yeah, we need to say what we're adding.
We want to add 4.3, right? I would be had 4.3.
And then it's 5.2, yeah.
Yeah, 5.2, excuse me, uh, add 5.3.
Okay.
Uh, accepting all, um, votes and actions of the board at the July 12, 2023.
Okay, then we've been seconded to add 5.3 to, um, accept meeting minutes and decisions from July 12, 2023, board members. You're welcome to say it, yeah, well.
Okay.
I'm going to hear it. No, I'll add a, a new vote. Which? Yeah, yeah. Alright, so now, correct, who will then be moved on to.
Now we have to attempt the consent agenda.
Yeah.
I know, but that's.
There's still, visitors, yeah.
Okay, so now you should be on here.
Did you do visitors?
Yeah, and she said those are the meetings, right? Alright, so are we good now, you guys?
We're good.
Alright, so now we are actually, I believe, on 5.0, consent.
Yes.
Right? Maybe on 7.0? We'll get this, alright, okay, so on the consent agenda, anyone?
Who did we accept the consent agenda, pretend?
I will second.
Can you say it's pretend words if that was a minute? I guess I'm not sure where I'm going with this, okay, alright, so then we've been seconded to accept the consent agenda.
You will not have nightmares, but I wonder if we did this right, it's been a great.
I'll go to favor, say, uh, hi. Alright, have that one.
You learned how to do the right.
Work it out. Alright, alright, well, then we're going to go now to 5.1, that speech does the integrated test management program, I think we have the.
That's, uh, we can second.
Should be to add.
Stories.
We're already accepted.
I know, we did the same thing, bye.
Okay.
I did. Okay.
You can, you can.
Okay, no, that's, no, it's because I was looking at, um, the numbers didn't match, no, we didn't move the six, it was 1.1. Alright, we're next, so we should be 6.1.
My report that you just said 6.0.
I said 6.1, okay, sorry, we're making you the 6.1.
Okay.
The number. Alright, to manage the super agenda report, I just forgot.
Yes, so I just have a couple of things, um, that I wanted to bring to your attention, one of them I don't, well, yeah. This, this first one is the early literacy initiative, household group of 98, we have, want to include this, it gives us opportunity, it's a $90 million grant, uh, with a 25% match grant, so we can match that in multiple ways. Um, one way to match it is use, use our student investment account, uh, to fund, teachers of the elementary level that fall within the category of early literacy, that can be included, 25% match, so it's not necessarily, we're having to add more dollars for already spending money in that area, because you know that it demonstrated. I believe our number is somewhere between 400 and $450,000 followers, when we kind of give you up the 90 million among all, uh, two hundred school districts for Asia. Um, I think what's important for us to look at is allowable, allowables, professional help and coaching, um, for early literacies, that's instructional coaching. It's interesting that first board, the last board mentions instructional coaching, essentially, um, extended, uh, learning times, after-school programs, uh, curriculum, just purchases, names, investment, and, uh, scientific research based, critical, the lines, that's, um, I would see us using this, uh, for supporting additional teachers at the early ages, uh, instructional coaches, so I think there's a lot of good, takes one, this one for our question. The next one is the abbreviated school day, this one is, um, the law, the intent is, uh, very good. The application demonstrates a little bit of a disconnect between what we're doing in schools and reality, and, and I'll share that part. The intent of this is particularly during COVID, there are many, many students that were placed on abbreviated school days, uh, particularly on special education or 504 programs that didn't receive instruction like they should have, um, I think we would all, uh, suggest that none of our children received instruction like you would expect. But it was even more, uh, severe for our students with disabilities, and so this was a way to correct that. And there are some districts that on a regular basis, the child struggles behaviorally, um, rather than provide supports and other interventions, the solution is always send them home and put them on a half-day and then work back, and so this is an attempt to take away with that. Um, I think all districts do that to some degree, um, but this puts the power back into parents' hands, which I think is a good thing. So if a school district says, you know, we're going to put your child on a half-day, the parent has the right to say, no, you're not going to do that, we're going to work with interventions, so your child, my child suffers, that easy, and the intent of the law, a good rule, that's what should be happening. But there's always add-ons and residuals when the legislature makes educational rules. One of the big ones is all of our, uh, curricular programs, if a child is on an IEP or a 504, um, you would be in violation of this law, because that's considered, uh, an abbreviated date. In addition, if, if we have a child in high school that's taking, like, a credit recovery in a mentor class, online mentor class, if there is not a certified teacher sitting in that class, that's a scheduled class, that too is considered, uh, an abbreviated date. And with the abbreviated date, there's, um, multiple checks that have to go in it. Now, mind you, that's really focused on students in special education and 504, or their potential, or they're being tested to be, in special education will fall under this rule. The other piece where it can create issues, uh, as an example, definitely have a child that's on an IEP, and they have enough credits at school to graduate on time, so they want to, their senior year, take half a day and work the other half. They're on, they're on abbreviated date, and our district is subject to fines. There's a workaround, you have to have a, have a IEP meeting, sign some documents, and say, that's apparent, we agree to support this, and I believe that has to be reviewed either every six or 90 days, so there's a lot of rulemaking being, uh, done around this to make sure we're doing and know how to apply the rule. There's a lot, um, lawyers that are coming through it, so we can scan track, I, I'm pretty confident that there'll be some adjustments to this. My hope is that it's not going to impact options that we put in place for students, uh, so I think that people who are really good will make those adjustments. That's, that's my worry, as well as my hope, worry is that this could cause issues with our cultural academy, or students that want to enter, if they're not getting credit, then that enter, it's gonna count, it would be.
And there's not a certain amount of numbers, actually, the times, but if you're taking out on. Your program, is it one period, maybe more than one period, or is it any amount?
I, I believe it's, they average what the district students have for minutes, and then the student passes, so anything below that, then you're out of time. And it will require multiple. Yeah, so, really interesting to watch this one.
I wish we would actually make that bigger, because I know, like, when I had kids starting in kindergarten, first grade, secondary, I felt like, and especially my older boys that didn't like that, it's, I started when I was 11, I would totally think it created a, a calm, and, you know, a lot of, I started reading, right?
Yeah, but it, and it may impact our homeschool program, but the key is, especially in our IEP, so that, that helps a little bit, but it's, it's creating significant stress. You probably appear about this, uh, this weekend.
It's a factual thing, but.
Okay. Uh, oh, the other piece that should be mentioned, uh, the current legislature was that board members can't discuss the votes, um, be compensated. It's supposed to be $500, that would be a board discussion, uh, if not, then all that, the district is required to pay their expenses, I believe, currently. Um, I would recommend having conversations with listening to what your peers think, we, uh, what's your?
I think we're not on that.
Uh, more to come, I'll, I'll continue to get, I just saw that.
Just, did you think that this has impact, or it's how?
It passes, it's, 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 you've already sent out letters, I believe, to students who potentially are, if, were, were in violation of this.
There is nobody on board saying, sure, that's much better.
Um, well, it puts the bonus back on, it puts the bonus back on us.
There is, there's no force saying there's a five, there's, like, that was a quick old, that you, like.
Well, yeah, for true one, because it could be a, and they draw for.
What if you can see them at home during a work, they're going to be, they're in violation, they're, you're being.
They, they wouldn't be considered true, the district would consider, maybe, for not providing an exception. So you'd have, have to have an agreement with the family that gets okayed for working home, as part of their IEP plan, and then that gets reviewed on a regular basis. That's.
And despite, just by doing our normal oversight, and whatever, thank you.
You should be, but there's, there's additional oversight that's required.
Not that, and only, there's not a big one.
Um, yeah, I'll make this up, yes.
And notice that AHSG or behavioral or anxiety, you don't have a night in your life or part now, yes, or get those in, right, or.
I believe, I believe this is a five. Really. Alright. Uh. Our favorite topic. So, next week, I have a meeting with, uh, some arx and engineers and folks to talk about the baseball field, softball field. This is an option that we're looking at, this is the softball field, that's in place of the current softball field, this is also in place of the current softball field. Um, trying to decide whether we want to have this push out this year.
Reality, I'm afraid, it's a lot of inspiration.
To get a, have a wall, but it, if I went to do a painting excavation, what it does do is it provides, I think, pretty close to a full field or soccer pitch. That, I don't, I don't believe that would ever be used for, um, a game, but it could be used for practice, caveat would be, this has to be a removal, you know, which isn't terrible. Um, the next question is, do we put lines, and I guess for me, I cringe to have lines going all the way down into the baseball field like that, so I don't know how useful that would be, if I actually had this.
Yeah, they have the line.
The band would love it.
Are you sure?
Yes.
It was, I think, it's too trendy, it's a little.
That really, in reality, it's the band that would love it, but they also want lines, or they, they are.
Yes, that's, could we, they need, it needs lines from 20, our life to 20, our life.
Yeah.
The, the, they would, at least, could we, could we put, could we put combs, that could be put, like, dots, dot, 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 and.
I think it's only, I think buckets, so.
I mean, just put, comb on, but you need the lines.
They actually need the lines on the dirt now.
On dirt now, yeah.
They draw their paint, but the reason being is that you're trying to line up a group of kids. On the spread.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, referencing dots is pretty tough.
Well, plus something to do the lines, that could be taken back off, and fresh up.
One of the things. What it does.
That's why I was.
To, uh, sort of, I did ask Jared, because one of our people, the, the church people said, I did just paint it on, you know, the chalk paint, I used a regular wire grass and washcloth, and Jared said, actually, today I asked about it, he painted some blue lines with that stuff for Gablet, first put in the field, was lines, I was there, I was there, yeah.
Maybe it is a wash-up tape.
I guess it is simple and white, okay. I'll, 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 I'll.
Something that we could, this is for your whole clock time, or you got plans up, well.
We did actually, I've gone to deep worst things, but it was quite bad, too.
Yeah.
It's not the nicest thing to try to, if you're stuffing that in, then you're pulling it out, and then.
Yeah, maybe print, you could pull it off, or make it sticky, and everything that moves on top of it.
It's actually, yeah, you have a, for, for, if they never play, a blue chalk line, it's a, all of a sudden.
Yeah, I tell you, what they could do, if you didn't want to do that, is they could put, yeah, sure, make them, replace them, it costs too much, I'll replace them, but, but like reference dots, so you could go across the line, so that you don't have this big field that's on there, but you have like reference dots where the 10, or 20, or 30, or 40 are, and it just blocks 10 yards apart, that at least kids can kind of orient themselves, but there's no way they can make a, I'm the high school kids, first of all, and they just can't, to orient a straight line, or you're marching in, through orange lines. Without the music.
I, I do know where.
Yeah, we'll put all these dots on the page with no lines, you know, it doesn't.
As far as where the fans be.
With the team?
Yeah, because you're sitting clear down here in the corner like you would normally for a softball game, you are not going to see way down the soccer field, you're, you're normally on the side, you know.
This isn't for a soccer game, it's for soccer practice.
I am, I still.
It is.
Yeah.
This is a lower softball game.
This is the upper, that's the baseball field.
Okay, so are we, are we going to do both?
Okay.
Alright, softball field here, it's true.
So this is actually a, great, as well, as I was thinking.
Okay, so that was the baseball, this is the softball.
This is, this is the softball field, right?
Right, yes.
Here's the fire highway, there, and the, the.
I have them switched, that's why.
Oh.
Yeah, you, I'm disoriented, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, my, my.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So then the baseball.
And this is down here, right?
Yeah. If, if, for me, I would only strike the, the last half of that, you know, the, so, you could strike this, and you could strike down to maybe here or someplace, you know, just so that people can gather again, or I don't know, but, I don't know, that, I, I like baseball.
How many yards, how many yards you need, if it's 20 to 20?
It's 20 to 20, yeah, yeah.
So 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80. Well, that we should have did that, right, because of this subtraction, so could, so.
When we do a log, you have to count 20 as a zero.
So this could be 20.
Yes. That would be 20.
I wonder, I wonder if that, I could ask about that, because I, I think I could go to those lines down here, it's just, I hate going to courts or fields, and there's.
Line, there are football lines going here, baseball lines, and a cross line here, and a soccer pitch.
There's some good ones though, that we play on and never noticed, like essentially that dark or gray, the kind of line thing, and it's just a marker, but it looks like dirt.
Once you get into a baseball field, you could do that.
That's a two point, I wonder if it could be just a different color green.
Yeah.
Like through the whole field, we'd get, we'd get a goofy name that calls the rain.
Well, yeah.
It's a zebra field or something.
It's not, no, it's not a football field.
If every 10 yards, there was a, a foot wide stripe, then you could just put a comb out there.
Well, what if you issue it different colors, of black and black, or, not black and white, and different colors of, of green, so you have like being yard, like your baseball field.
Right.
Oh, like a full.
To 10 yards.
10 yards light green, 10 yards dark green.
And that's actually, you can't do that foot stripe, because that'd be thrown off your yardage anyway, but you could definitely make the wide part of your.
If you use 10 yards different colors, that is even cost your money, that's, that's a good idea, and then don't cut in the white lines.
That would work, right?
Yeah, that would work, because you know where that line is. You know where you are.
Yeah, get a room.
I'm done, I know.
I mean, if you, if you look at a, I mean, you don't have to put the lines in, I mean, in baseball fields now, they, they move them, like, by, by different contracts.
You can, maybe some of the sides.
And this stuff comes 10 yards wide, we know that, that's, that's the size of the strips, so you just, you could, you could put it along.
Still put 10, 20.
Only the only thing you can't do is make it green and yellow, because that, that's.
Oh, yeah, then we pick the other side, I'll put 10, 20, 30, we at least, just put the numbers at least one side, everyone's on the same page on that part, I, I wouldn't mess up it.
I don't know if the numbers really matter, that, that, because we have, we have. I don't know if the numbers really matter then, because we have, we have, we have, we have plastic numbers that we put out of the hall.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
Or lay into the bucket.
We put out the, yeah, the plastic yard markers, we put those out the middle so they're around.
They can just work with.
We didn't cut in numbers on the lines, that's expensive.
Yeah, I don't think we need numbers.
I don't have a name with one.
And those are actually, those are actually cut and mowed, they, they take it down and cut the pieces in white and blue and down with hot glue, that's expensive.
Hard to get one. That was great, but. Maybe there's a couple options.
Yes.
Go online, we might find out for something, but never know what we all would manage. Okay, so this one, okay, the intention is this for to be only a practice field, hold on, never an actual game for soccer, I'm not that part of it.
I, I would think that the main field will be where these two players are. Still, because you're gonna be in the stadium now. Would there be times when you've got a club team, so they were having a tournament, and went out and played soccer here and soccer on this field?
Sure.
We're doing it, we're doing youth, so we've got half here, we've cut it in half, kick and chase this way, kick and chase this way, same thing. Maybe.
And then does this allow us to be close to you in the rec center for them to have?
It's, it's closer.
But I know it's still up there, but. Only thing I think is I'm working in our championship field, I mean, we're so upset there.
I, I like this idea of the youth.
Even they do, they're like, they're set to have a brand new field, especially those.
Yeah.
So there's gonna be a little bit of, yeah, I just got a brand new baseball field that haven't been able to play for years, and why are you setting that like?
Probably, probably. I guess my opinion of that, I get the, the possessiveness. But our schools, our fields, our community, and the way we get support, it will, these types of things will probably help people. So that will be, you'll be back there.
How would you finish?
Southern neighbors will be here the day we finish.
Right, yeah.
If they pass a ball, when they pass the ball, I'd rather. They climb up.
Yeah, the big joint here is between the middle school and high school.
They're talking about putting the middle school next to the high school where the baseball field is, that's why I'm saying, and then they'd have, the baseball fields have to be over where the middle school was. You've got property up there.
Yeah.
Think they still have enough room? You got quite a bit, I, I like that, I think they came up with a brilliant idea, but they're close for C T P and band and everything else, you don't have to build a separate.
I, ideally choose as the city to pay for a, a line back to the initial. And have a, have that spot that got designated for uh, J D softball. Have it big enough so if you get J D softball or J D baseball, they want to play, they can put the world out there and they can play.
Yeah, I sent you a picture today of a twenty, twenty fields. And it says community park. I go, oh, oh yeah, they study calculus going on, they could, they could now try and get a calendar, there's, there's plenty. Plenty of these soccer fields sitting down there, baseball or whatever.
They should let that softball course long, I don't know, and we could have this second one, oh, we match it with. Twenty years.
Anyway, so we've got. This is, this is, this is, I, I think we should start signing people.
We're, we're moving the fastest.
I was thinking, what is it gonna be?
I like the idea of the stripes, the, the, the two, two toned field and have the sauce of the double, but we don't want stripes.
We, we were hoping, you know, to kind of fight here and get work started this summer, they're just, they have a good schedule. This will be completed next year, hopefully they'll be wrapping it up about this. Next year.
Yeah, I know, oh my gosh.
Like any other thoughts or questions about that?
So just using that in the, so where's the baseball?
I think this is probably just the best compromise we've come up with.
Like, I just last time, I just wanted to ask, like, where do they have some baseball play at?
This is baseball.
Oh, I thought you said softball, sorry.
I did, he did, he did.
He keeps clicking back and forth. I know, okay, alright.
And, and they, they look too similar.
Every time you feel like A, B, A, B, B, A.
I should have put a big softball, so this is.
Okay, got it, okay. I was like, what'd you do with the points?
That's right, this is softball.
Okay.
You can see it's more rounded, and then that's the.
I don't want to just shut it.
And, and there's a building E right there. And then we're hoping, my, my thought is somewhere out here is where the field house will be, you've got the property, you can use the. It'd be nicer to have it lower, but maybe I think that again, cost. We've asked Hoffman and our other construction partners to run pipe and utilities to where we need them, so when we partner with Booster Club. Uh, and leverage some of our additional funding, make those happen.
Yeah, tell me all the.
It should pay by the inch.
Do you decide to lay the extra plumbing or we're keeping that from over where there's existing?
No, we're, the plan is to add battens to the field house as well.
Okay.
Where it gets, my, I, I guess what I envision, and we're just in that stage now, it's very creative. Um, I would envision field house, put a concession stand up there and restrooms. So positioning it so it could meet uh, baseball, either anything else.
Just for our, our kids that say to do things behind them, so like sport, then. And that before.
So out of the field house, you're just a main warehouse, there's that field house that has straight across from the graveyard shit, that's, that, that's huge. Pretty good, pretty, pretty good.
Yeah, it goes from twenty to twenty eight.
This is one we play in Portland, that is huge, like a lot of habits that are really neat down there, fuck it down, I'll just toss it over. We're just holding it, those three, you know, my, I'll side, mine down in, you're in, fair enough. Pretty. So the everything, basically now, I mean, the fire lane that we are gonna have to put all together back there, do we still have the same space that we've been having the playground area for the child care? Or are we gonna have to move now?
The childcare is going off the backside of the building. Uh, it'll be covered, they're gonna be paving, having it to be paved, do they have, will be, it's right there, they're on, we're on.
I just want to make sure we do that, once down there now.
In reality, that's. Actually, it's, it's one sidewalk down there, stuff right there, it's, it's right there.
I'd say the fire lane with the flag, that's the stuff.
There's a.
No, the far, the far lane's in place and actually puts it really close to the far lane and it'll act, I think it'll get, gets a little space in right, right surface.
That's what I expect.
Yeah.
They don't need, you can have races, yeah, yeah, especially down west.
There's not actually, they have, they can have.
Yes, okay, well, actually you can get to them with help, but it'd make you faster to get them.
So the trick is now, one thing that I'd like to consider is accessibility to this. For folks that have challenges, just because I experienced it this summer at, in, in Fort Worth, Sherwood, we went to Sherwood and, and Rosie had to walk. Apple, they hope, always a nice grade and she did it, but she had some more challenges and I said, well, other folks have challenges and, and actually. Jacob's other grandparents also have challenges and, and it was a heck of a hike and, and the restrooms in fact were in the very. That was the motivator, we weren't gonna go down there and then we had to walk all the way down to the restroom and all the way back and it was at the bottom of the thing and it's just big, long, sloping hill or. A hundred steps going up, I don't know how many, but it's an awful lot, fifty steps going up.
So. Seventy two. Long, long, it was like, maybe we should bring that up, the, the current intent is to have people either come from here or through this section here, I believe. In between, this is actually back of it, I think there might be space to walk between the two. So I'm not sure those would be A D A requirements, so there's also a parking that could be better here.
So just, just trying to make that as a thought, even if you could walk from here, in order to get to your stands over here and here, this is four hundred feet. So we're walking a few hundred yards, then we got our parking that's out here and we are in enough walking, two, three hundred yards each way, four hundred yards, so that's a quarter mile.
Give it closer than, probably that's a little, well, that's.
It is closer.
Did it lower it?
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's gonna be closer than doing that.
Yeah, going through the wood shop is probably gonna work very well, hopefully that's going to be a.
Yeah, they put things on the backside of D there.
So going through the C T E areas, it's just something to look at on a bigger scale and bigger map and, and start, and think about. Uh, this is pretty close to A D A grade, so people could get there, but it's just an opposite long walk and. If you're using a tennis ball walker and you're, had hip replacement, it's.
Okay, okay. These are, it's gonna be a really great factor there for our.
There you go. Only ten bucks, I'll take you right to your seat.
What's in the little space right there between the fire ring and it's kind of like the end of the. Okay, so you got the fire ring, it comes down, it gets to this, the bottom end of the, what's in that little spade now right up? There's nothing laying back, what's there?
That's gonna be hopefully.
Oh, some addition, probably some addition.
I was just thinking that maybe you could allow people who come in and be on the friendly, completely park there.
There's, there's gotta be a way to have, to find the shortest distance.
And, and the other problem is that we just created a building from here to, from B to C, there isn't the.
Can't walk through anymore.
Can't walk through it anymore.
Yeah, can't walk through it anymore, unless we put doors in and it does, we're moving on our intent to create that.
What can be a nice, nice path though, if they're by tree makers, um, fire, or whatever it is now, but it'll get you there.
It's, it just is what it is, it's, but it's something that we wanna look at that people don't. We really wanna look at it, make sure that it's as accessible as it can be, you're stuck, you know, the, the ground, the same problem Sherwood had, this. Or we have wanted to build the stadium and this is what we're gonna build and.
And you put it down.
It was a very expensive.
You can get so far.
They really, that part we had through grass. I mean, their path was ten feet, twelve feet wide. Sixty, literally drive a fire truck and ambulance down it and it was, and it gently not slow, but. The time we could make it back up, but two stops along the way, but it's, it's, uh, there's just challenges that the things have to do with one, what they do to do the best we can.
It might be, I don't know, it might be shorter, the part up here and have some sort of a walk that could be.
Yeah, it might be.
Then you can watch the E, E and uh. How people would still be able to get there.
Yeah. People pay, people pay, they make money for this year in Orange State. You know, so it could be a shortfall.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, it requires a little bit of big pictures.
A little bit of big pictures.
Picture two, but it takes.
You ready, can we get into it, right, and then we'll brush parts of it. It's complex a lot.
So yeah, but I, I, I think if this is kind of the direction we're in, then again. I think it's, it just comes with time, you have to make your mind up when it adds it, so I'm all for it.
Okay, um, we're bringing back welcome back staff and family picnic Tuesday the twenty ninth, four to six thirty, hopefully you can make it. Um, we are gonna try to reach out and invite all of our retired folks as well in the past. Um, Stacy and the central office folks have done a fantastic job with burgers and hot dogs and bouncy houses and the fire truck and the climbing walls, so they're working on that. We may dial back a little bit, I think at one point we had hot candy, popcorn, snow cones.
Yeah, ice cream.
Ice cream, but it was a lot, and I, I'm not, I'm not sure if kids and families have just, that's why I would. Still going to cut candy, I think it's still going to cut any ice cream.
Yes.
We're gonna dial that piece down.
Especially when you have the bouncing, I'm sorry, I can't.
Well, and it's hard to stout it.
Basically.
You know what, so now you might want to check into, I just heard from one of my parents the other day, that Don's turn over, you know, one of the windows.
Oh, good.
You might want to do some homework on that, we might have to get it somewhere else. I know that, I know that a couple daycare purchased extra with grandminds for them to have and they're running them out on the weekend and they're actually taking places that they love, going back and picking them up. And it might be that Don's has backed off there, so. So check out your vendors.
Does Sheriff just put on a, like that, you can ask the sheriff where he got this.
So we'll get, just do something.
Yeah, well, we, we do, we reach out to the crediting, they bring in their code, we reach out to.
They have the.
Do they have cotton candy, I didn't know that, so we'll ask about that, the National Guard, if they're available, or they're.
I don't know.
Uh, I think they've got like a obstacle course.
Yeah, right, it's like.
Giant long slide, slide.
It was supposed to be for the bounce castle part, that's really perfect.
Two, two drop slide, they go.
I, I didn't think about that, they play the most right.
He got. Why do you know it's like? It's done this for a while.
Any Don's insurance has said that, or two million house houses has blown away and they had a tornado or something and.
That is higher than four.
What, one more thing on the, that we do want to remember, to remember those things up. Is all these things that we do have in the field at the high school, is that we make sure that we have different fuse boxes and different electrical outlets, so that when you have big events and there's. Five bouncing castles or there's anything else, you don't know, so taking that into consideration, yes.
I even offered to tell me that I asked for fifty amp, very specific plug to be put on the side of the middle school there, so that we could put a cord out there and put a spider box. It would be different plugs on there. I don't know that they're, they're different or not, but what you want to do is have spider box plug. And then with that, you have two, two twenties are minimal, you have six one tens and all ground, all, all safe. What do you have plugs and again, you can use extension cords and you just run a hundred to the port out to wherever you want the spider box to go, if you're gonna have a dance or be on the field, but you graduate.
We don't have anything.
But it's, it takes a fifty amp main plug and a cord this second thing, it's a problem that I use to solve my own issues and. It's, it's not, it's not that hard, it's not that expensive and it does provide if you're gonna have a, an event on the field, you can, you'll do it, as long as there's running power. To just. Yeah, you run a six hour wire out there and get it done.
We, we couldn't even hook an extension cord to the plug that no one would use, it's a concession stand to one of those castles that will be. Yeah, so anyway, so that's, I just wanna make sure we think about that and we're going to do, I mean, that stuff this time, so. Alright, okay, well, so we'll bring, bring the other question. Okay, then we're gonna move on to the summer final, we'll do a dress board for color comment on the agenda. Everybody, Chris, don't request this even. Alright, so then we're gonna move on to date, I know upcoming meeting, right, which is your August one third, twenty twenty three, regular recording, six thirty. For that, that thing, for those events, we have to, okay, so we have to, alright, and then twenty twenty one, twenty two, English learners and Oregon, and what will be happening, upcoming. So did you guys have anything else?
Um, and I do want to here, before the end of September, have, have one of our work sessions. The different initiatives that are kind of private, which are teaching plan, um, I'd like to have a, we're, we're on, we're doing what the state does for education, leadership on. Walk crews, uh, response intervention, our R P I work, how that kind of helps close the gap, also standard enrich. Uh, student experience and then have it, and then for, in there. I also know that the teaching unit, like, or a member who joined them at a R P I conference, so it's a, a lot of, a. Uh, and let you guys know, it's, it's been, uh, some really good training, I think you've heard about it already, and make sure we can say this.